What day is this?
Good morning. It is now nine o'clock. The Brazos County Commissioners Court, day four of budget workshops, is beginning. Before we start today, I'd like to turn the mic over to Commissioner Nettles for an announcement.
Yeah, I want to take the opportunity to honor a-
Turn your mic on. Oh, it is, sorry.
It's on. A former Brazos County employee, county court at law judge, 272nd district judge, classmate of mine, good friend, Rick Davis passed away last night. And so, keep him and his family in your prayers. He was a longtime servant of our county, of our community, and a good Christian brother. Thank you.
Amen. Would you all take this time to take a moment of silence with us? Thank you. Ms. Payne, the mic is yours.
Good morning. Hope everybody's having a great day so far. Today's going to be a little different than the others. And we're going to go over our general fund revenues. First Assistant County Auditor Marcy will come up and go into detail over that. And then we'll go into operations. How we set up operations this year is by function because I wanted the court as well as the public to understand what is under each function, say first local government as well as judicial law enforcement, but we'll go into a bit more detail after our revenue presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Turner, thank you. And once again, state your name for the listening audience.
Sure. Marcy Turner, First Assistant County Auditor, recent one. Good morning, everyone. Today, we're going to just review some of the general fund proposed revenues. Per Local Government Code 111.063, the county auditor estimates the fund balances and revenues from all sources during the preceding fiscal year, as well as estimates the fund balances and revenues from all sources for the ensuing year. The FY '26 general fund proposed revenues that we're going to discuss today do not include the ad valorem taxes. You all will discuss that in workshop next Wednesday, August 20th. Today, we're going to discuss the proposed general fund revenues in all categories except ad valorem. What we will discuss today comprises approximately 35% of the revenues that the county will take in in FY '26. The estimates that are provided to you were determined by the following manner. First, we went through and reviewed the '23 and '24 actuels, as well as the '22 actuels and '25 actuels year-to-date through June to determine historic trends on all categories. Next, we compared the 2025 year-to-date actual revenues through June to the '25 actual budget, I mean annual budget, to make sure that our budget that we set in '25 was appropriate and that we didn't actually maybe miss off, misguided, or misjudge on our '25 budget in each category. And then finally, during individual budget meetings with each elected official and department head, if that elected official or department head collects revenues that we're talking about today, they were able to give us insight as to any trends, any challenges, any information that might help us to set these estimated revenues. The goal in estimating revenues for the upcoming budget year is to provide you, the Commissioners Court, with revenues that are reasonably expected to be met in FY '26. It's important that the revenues that we provide to you be conservative estimates so that you, as a court, can determine spending priorities and set an ad valorem rate. So, it's been the historical practice of this county auditor's office to give you what we kind of call, to kind of abide by the Goldilocks principle. We don't, we would prefer that our estimates be just right, but if they are off, we would prefer that they be too cold than too hot. We want you to have the best possible revenue estimates that we determine can be met so that you can budget the amount of fund balance you need to balance the budget and not be surprised at the end of the year using more fund balance than you thought. Okay. Now, let's, we're going to present this to you on a very aggregate level. At a macro level, we can dive into details as you may have questions. Okay, we're going through categories of taxes, charges for services, interest, other revenues, the use of reserves. Right now, we just have the reserves in there that we need per statute, not any use of general fund balance as a reserve, our intergovernmental revenues, and then other financing sources. The biggest piece to notice is that, with that, you know, it might be a good idea for you to pull up the more detailed because I'm going to talk detail about two specific areas. Oh, you didn't? Okay. Okay, great. Well, then, let me just tell you a couple of facts that are kind of important. We are budgeting this year $0 in our delinquent ad valorem. We're going to talk about ad valorem next week, but I thought this was important for you to note and kind of give you a preview of this. Usually, that's where we post the prior year taxes that have not been paid that get paid to us in this year. It's also where we post refunds for prior year taxes. We're, this year, that account went negative because we had more refunds to taxpayers in prior years on settlements than we actually had payments from prior years come in. Because of that, we're not going to budget any delinquent tax revenue in FY '26. We usually budget about $400,000. The other piece I need you to know is that we have no active TERS right now, although we do have a TERS that you all have approved that's going to be in downtown Bryan. Our TERS for Bryant Town Center and our TERS for Traditions are now inactive. The last year of Traditions was this year. So, we have no TERS payments into a TERS this year. We will not have payments into a TERS until the project in downtown Bryan reaches its additional value. Don't know when that's going to be yet, so I don't have that, obviously, in our budget for next year. The other piece that's really driving a big change is our change in interest. You're going to notice that if you take out the reserves, the general fund reserve revenues that we budgeted for last year, which is about $90 million, and compare it to what I've got right now in the reserves, we're basically flat in revenues in all categories. Where we have growth in some categories, we have also some reductions in others. We end up being about flat to last year in all categories if you take out a reserve usage that we had budgeted for last year. When it comes to interest, we are budgeting a reduction of $3 million to our interest revenue. It's based on two presumptions. The first being, spoke with the county auditor, Christian Villarreal, there's anticipation, I think all would like this, from a personal standpoint, that our interest rates will fall in the next year. So, we have done an estimate, assuming that the interest will fall 100 basis points over the next fiscal year. That would result in about a 23% reduction to our interest revenue based on the balance that we have in general fund corpus if we kept that balance today. The other piece in that, in that calculation of the $3 million reduction in interest revenue has to do with the fact that as the medical examiner's office comes online, we will have a $21 million spin down on our general fund balance, which means our corpus will reduce by about 11% on what we're earning interest on. And those two things together, combined, are going to result in about a $3 million reduction to our interest revenue.
Commissioners, any questions?
Those are the big macro things. You have any questions on any of the details? Okay, great. And then we'll get to talk next week about tax rate.
Ms. Payne?
So, now, we're going to go over the general fund departments. So, as I was stating, how we have it broken down for the next three days is by function because that is how we have it in our budget book. And I do want the public to start getting acquainted with our budgeting process and how we present it. And so, by function, this, today, we're going to go over what is called the general government. I do want to make a note that as of right now, with all the capital requests that we've vetted, all the personnel that we vetted, right now, we're at a total expenditure budget $273,000, $273 million. Yes, you see a negative $18 million, and we'll get to that after we get through all the departments and we'll clear that up. But I want to let you know that as of right now, with all the transfers that we have discussed these last three days, our total budget is $273 million. Part of the general fund, general government is 20% of the budget. And so, right now, I want to go ahead and call the county judge, which I will present their budget. You have this handout in paper form as well, as well as you have received-
What you're showing there is not, I'm not finding it. Is it in, oh, another page?
Yes. So, we call it a working budget because every single minute, every single day, it changes all the way up until a proposed budget. And so, that's why you didn't receive it till last night because you were still reviewing, or till this morning because we were still going over personnel. And so, right now, we're going to go ahead and go over the county budget for the county judge. As you can see, I have the past experiences, which is actual, to budget to actuels for the last couple of years, as well as what has been requested this year. A total request of $1.6 million, which is $110,000 increase. Keep in mind, we're going over these departments. The SARI benefits include a 4% cost of living, so that's already included. You can see that in the supplies and other change, charges, I have decreased the budget by $6,750. And that cost, that was, we had money budgeted in software, we had money budgeted in copier fax supplies that we, it was too much. And so, I went ahead and budgeted what was actually being spent on all these categories. So, that's why there's a decrease of $6,750, as well as repair and maintenance. This was a copier contract that we have. It came down a little lower, and so, we saved a little money this year with a total increase of $110,000. You can see that it is a 7% increase compared to last year's budget, but overall budget is a 0.62%. Any questions regarding the county judge's budget?
Commissioners?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Payne.
Next up is the budget office. Let me do this. There, can you see it better? Okay. Like I stated, SARI benefits includes a 4% cost of living. I have decreased the budget office budget by $7,100, which is still a $9,000 increase due to the cost of living. An overall percent increase compared to last year to this year is 2%, but an overall percent to the whole budget is 0.16%. What I decreased with the transition of moving between floors the last three years and finding office space, we found furniture within, that was not being used until we move into the new portion of the administration building. So, I took that money back until it's needed, as well as conference seminar fees. We weren't, we're not really able to go as much as we can because we're so busy. So, we do a lot of online training sessions, and so, that constitutes the decrease. Any questions regarding the budget office?
Commissioners?
No.
Thank you.
I told you you're going to see red today. Okay, the next is going to be Commissioners Court. I will go ahead and review that budget since y'all are standing up there, or sitting up there. You can see that's a $1,000 decrease, which was from community, community relations. We were not spending what we thought we were spending, so I took a little money back and put what was actually being spent. It was a normal, it was normal $10,000, so I took some money back. Until we really spend what we're saying, I will budget closer to it. Of course, it's a 3% increase compared to last year's budget, but an overall 0.47. Any questions?
Commissioners?
No.
So, we have a division underneath Commissioners Court called non-departmental. This is a catch-all for anything that doesn't belong to a department. Say, for instance, we have the floating vehicle. So, if we have a department that uses the vehicle that doesn't have a department underneath them, we charge gas there. We have attorney fees, we have architectural fees. So, if we have something that needs to be looked at that doesn't belong to a department, it just is a catch-all for here. So, I decreased this budget by $274,000. It was way inflated, and so, I went ahead and decreased it to what we were actually being spent. Keep in mind that if we start doing a lot more projects or in telling attorney fees, architectural fees, professional fees, I can move from contingency to help support that cost, but I didn't want it just sitting there. Right now, it's a negative 4% decrease compared to last year's budget, and overall percent to the budget is 2.76. Any questions?
Commissioners?
No.
Well done.
The next is going to be contingency. This is the scary part. Every year, I budget $6 million. Last year, we budgeted $7 million because the tax increase, the tax rate increased. I had to put the money somewhere. I didn't want to obligate it, so I put it into contingency. So, that's why it's a decrease of 1.1 million. I need your thoughts on what the unknowns for this next year. We sent in capital regarding the parking garage, camera system, software, all the software requests. This is where it would come from. At this point, this, at this point today, I have $3 million left in contingency for me to get through the rest of the year. I know that I have close to 1.1 million overtime I have to pay off that is not accounted for, and so, this is a point where, would you like to keep it at 6 million, or would you like me to put it back to what it was last year?
Have we ever spent the entire amount of contingency?
Since I've been here, we did it one year, and we had to start pulling from departments.
So, you're saying, keep it at six or seven?
I would not lower, lower than 6 million, but I want to get your consensus on if we need to increase it to cover the what ifs because, as we were discussing in capital, you know, those projects that we just kind of said we will look into, they might become a project next year, and this is where we would put it.
Well, between those conversations at capital and then just looking at this last year with aging facilities, HVAC systems-
This is where it comes from.
Yeah, the elevator at the courthouse, you know, bam, 300 grand you weren't expecting. Just consistently six-digit items to keep the facilities up and running.
Yes.
I would say definitely not lower than six, probably go to seven this year, and then lower it next year if we're not utilizing it.
And we could keep it trend.
Maybe split the difference, 6.5?
Yeah, that's fine, too. But we just keep having all these things pop up, and I don't want to go to the taxpayer and say, hey, we didn't budget enough.
Which I'm hoping a strategic plan will help us address those, identify those-
The master plan, yes. Commissioners on the left.
Right, I agree, I agree. You know, because we, you know, we have this, you know, deferred maintenance and unexpected maintenance, you know, it's kind of like finding out, you know, your garage door broke. The spring on your garage door broke, which we have bigger projects than that, but I agree with the 6.5.
I want to make note that when departments are requesting funding for the use of contingency, I make them go back to their operations to try to find it. They should only, we should only be adding contingency to those departments at this point in time when they have really spent down everything. Now, if it's a project they forgot and they come to me in October, I ask them to find it within their current budget.
Now, this is my first time going through this. So, if we declare a national emergency in our county, that's not, this is not the-
That's not part of this. No, we have a reserve. And the only way to get into that emergency fund balance is if we enact an emergency.
But the salary study would be in here also, correct?
We do not have the full caution. Court hasn't approved it yet, but we'll get to HR's department pretty soon.
Okay.
Before we go any further, so, the air conditioner is running today, y'all, and it's literally over my head, so I'm going to ask everyone to speak up just because all I'm hearing is the roar of the air conditioner. So, I appreciate it if y'all would all speak, because even Bentley was about to say, can you speak up? Because I'm just hearing the roar.
You would like everybody to get into the mic. Be nice to them, Amanda.
Not quite like that, Brazos. Mr. Brazos.
So, the-
I'm sorry.
I like the idea of splitting the difference, but definitely not going under six, given our history.
And keep in mind, I have $2 million set aside in the capital improvement fund for, you know, those cases as well. I just, with the unknowns, you know, we didn't count on the AC being fixed over at the jail or at the health clinic. That was close to, what, $400,000 right there, piff gone. And so-
You've got moisture problems in some buildings, you've got roof leaks, you've got HVAC going out, and an old system with a refrigerant that's not able to be used anymore, so you're having to redo an entire buildings. Yeah, for the folks at home, stuff pops up a lot, and it's, that's what contingency's for, so, yeah, I think 6.5 is wise.
Okay.
Commissioner Brown, did you have a comment earlier?
No, I was just asking about the, about the study.
We have a portion of it budgeted, but until we get a true cost and court approves it, it's not in the budget yet. And so, it would probably be amended once that has gone through court and it's been approved.
Okay, thank you.
It will be approved, right?
It'll be, it'll come in our 26 budget.
And so, if, say, for instance, if it hits the agenda next Tuesday and Commissioner Court approves or disapproves, and the cost is increasing, then I will present it before I propose the budget. If the contract is approved after the proposed budget, then I will ask for it to be amended during the adoption portion of it to where it takes a vote. And so, there's time for us to do it. Now, if something happens, it does not, it passes adoption period, I could do a budget amendment in October to add the funds. So, we have several different options to get it done.
Very good.
Sound good? Okay, so, I will make that correction on contingency. Any more questions on contingency? No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Community support. Um, I did give you an updated handout, um, this morning regarding community support. I did receive the Brazos District, um, increases, or their budget. And I wanted to bring that to light.
Are we gonna go through that now?
Well, I was just getting, so we already went through outside agencies. There's two projects. I do want to make a note that, um, the Brazos District, as well as Brazos Valley Transit. And so let me get the Brazos District's budget, since it was not presented to y'all during the, um, uh, outside agencies. So the Brazos District's budget was 1.3 million last year. It went up to 1.4, which is an additional $102,000 increase.
Okay, I'm finding it.
And so, and remember that it's, their whole budget's spread between all the entities, and we pay our portion of it. Now, if they don't spend all of it at the end of the year, we do get money back, but we won't know until the end. Okay?
Okay.
The next thing is going to be the Brazos Valley Transit. I do like to read a letter, um, for the record regarding the increase that I have put into the proposed budget. Um, they're requesting $400,800, which is an $84,000 increase. And I want to read this letter to explain the reasoning behind it. "To whom it may concern, as a county Veterans Service Officer for Brazos County, I am reaching out to emphasize the critical importance of Brazos County Public Transit to our community, especially our veterans. Our department is currently in the process of relocating to the West East, West End Parking Garage Office, directly adjacent to the bus terminal. This move is being made with the safety and convenience of our veterans in mind, many of whom face disabilities and mobility challenges. The new location will allow veterans to park in the garage, sheltered from the elements, with only a short walk to our office. Additionally, veterans who rely on the bus service will be able to disembark directly at the terminal and walk straight into our office. While this may seem like a small change to some, for veterans' mobility issues, mental health concerns, and other disabilities, it is a central step in ensuring their continued access to critical, is access to critical services. Each year, approximately 4,800 veterans visit our office, and many depend on the bus services to access a range of vital services, including claim filing, counseling, records requests, housing assistance, housing repairs, education benefits, barrel benefits, health benefits, access to laptops for VA, telehealth appointments, job interviews, appeals hearings, and more. We serve as a one-stop shop for Brazos County veterans. Without this reliable transportation, many of our veterans would face, um, barriers in their efforts to improve their lives after their service. Brazos County Transit plays a, um, a big role in serving our veterans and other members of the community. Therefore, I strongly urge you to carefully consider the impact that any potential changes to this transit system could have on the mobility, independence, and well-being of the individuals. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Pamela Robertson. Um, she's our, um, Veteran Service, um, locally. And so with this, I would like to open for discussion regarding the Transit District of increasing their budget."
Commissioner Brown.
Nina, I'd like to see, I'd like to see what their budget is, because they get money from both cities and the county. They get it from the state, and they get it from the federal government. And personally, I, you know, just, just from watching the buses around town, I think it's the most ill-run organization that there is in, in the Brazos Valley. And I want to help our veterans, but I don't want to just throw away money to watch more buses haul, running around town with one or two people on it all the time.
So their budget was presented back in May regarding, um, their presentation?
Yeah.
Yes, we saw their full budget in May. Um, in Precinct 2, my, the borders are, are wild. I mean, you've got the outskirts of Eastern County all the way to College Station City Hall is in Precinct 2, all the way out to Traditions, Miramont. Um, you know, the, the whole east side, all those big neighborhoods up and down, um, 1179 and 158. And you've got the most ridership of any precinct is in Precinct 2. Uh, looking at the budget on, in May, seeing the money that they now, as the county has grown in population, they don't receive some of the funding that they previously received.
So a loss of federal funding.
Loss, right, a loss of the funding. We saw that when we looked at their entire budget in May.
Right.
Um, the, the services they provide, I mean, Mrs. Robertson's letter is only one of the reasons why, but they, they shared with us extensive data of ridership. And so I, I would be in favor of this increase.
Right.
Commissioner Watson?
Same thing here. And as I was driving in, the number of people who were lined up on this side of, of Texas Avenue waiting to get on the bus was, I realized, somebody probably has to do with time, people trying to get to work and early appointments or whatever the case may be. But I am absolutely a staunch supporter. Precinct 4 follows Precinct 2 in terms of ridership. Uh, you know, because in my case, Precinct 4 is probably the most concentrated folks that are, that need that service. And so I absolutely support that. And I am delighted to hear that they're moving out of this building, that's an addition comment, moving out of this building, because I've watched veterans with disabilities have to walk that long hallway to come to her office. And, you know, they are, you know, even with someone who, when I first started, I was on a walker. That's a nice little hall if you're a bit infirmed in some way. And so having that easy access transportation and access to the services, I think is an absolute win. So I am, I'm in support of the request that they're making.
Commissioner Nettles.
Precinct 1 uses the least amount of services of Brazes Transit District, um, mostly because we have a lot of farmland, and it doesn't run out there that far. But we have a lot of veterans in this community and in this county. They rely upon it. A lot of them are disabled. They use it to get to the VA clinic. They use it to get to the Veterans Services Office here, and the Texas Veterans Commission. Uh, we have to support them, because they literally, well, they've served our country, and they deserve the opportunity to.
Yep.
Work with those organizations to continue to get their health care and their benefits.
Amen.
May I make a comment?
Ms. Payne, please.
I love getting here at 6 o'clock in the morning. And the corners are packed, and the buses are picking them up.
Right.
Both on this corner and on this corner.
Right.
So I, I will add to that comment. I, I had a meeting the other day, so I understand the lack of federal funding due to the increase of population or due to our county growth. Uh, I also was of the opinion of Commissioner Brown, but, uh, I think it's time for Commissioner Brown and I to have coffee with you at 6 o'clock on that corner, so we can see the numbers of people running these buses, because the buses are running people to and from work, which is before we get here and after we leave, I'm afraid. And I would love to see that with my own two eyes.
I was gonna take pictures, but I didn't want to be called a stalker.
Right, right. I thought about that, too. And I thought, well, they may not want, you know, I don't have the right to photograph them. But I've seen concentrations of people in different locations.
Well, and, and when they presented their full budget to this court in May, um, a couple of things stood out to me. And then speaking with the Director Wendy Whedon in detail about this is, yes, we need to support our veterans, but it's the working poor among us that utilize those services.
True.
These are people that don't want to be on, um, they don't want to depend on everyone else. They're, they're going to work, but they don't have reliable transportation.
Exactly.
Or they do have mobility challenges. And these buses, as they explained to us, too, how they're called out. So you have regular routes, but you also have, you know, come and get me type buses.
The vans.
And whatever bus is nearer is the one that's gonna come. So that might be the big bus, and you might be the one or two people on a big bus. And yes, that does appear, for me, that was striking until I had the conversations with them and understood why. And as they presented at court in May, they have to come and go get, you know, they have to go get people. And they have a resource or, or a bus that might be big. Now, I would love in the future, of course, they're looking at it all the time, but I would love in the future to determine how we could maybe do with smaller vehicles, do with less expense, do, especially now that they've lost the federal funding that kinda dictated maybe what vehicles they were choosing. Now they're gonna have more autonomous decision-making because they're not worried about checking those boxes for federal funding. I would love to see them continue to peel away at this organization and see what they can do to determine more efficient and less expensive modes of transportation for people. But, uh, anyway, I'm beating a dead horse.
Right.
Yeah, well, that, that, that's, that's where my disconnect was. And I asked them in that meeting in May, why don't they go to some smaller buses, you know, that seat 15, you know, the Chevrolet, smaller buses? And they said, well, it costs just as much to operate a big bus as it does one of those small buses. That's incorrect. I was in the car business for 30 years. So I know that, that the tires for a big bus cost twice as much as they do for a little Chevrolet van that, that holds 15 people. Oil changes are a lot less on that little van than they are on a big bus. All the expenses on a big bus are much, much higher than they are on a small bus. But they wanted to argue with me about it and say, no, no, it's, it's, it's just as much on a small bus. That's where my disconnect was, because I thought that for the number of people they're picking up in my precinct, they could use smaller buses. So that, that's, that's the problem I had.
But, but wouldn't it, since right now, the buses, I don't know whether they are, how well they operate, but they look like good buses. They look like they're in great shape. So right now, it would not be economically sound to replace, even though they may not be filled, good working buses to put in. As, as they, maybe as the buses fail, you replace them with smaller buses.
Yeah. The term she used in May that stuck in my mind is like the vehicles, the Swiss Army knife. That, that, but, that smaller Chevy van, because I concur, a, a less expensive vehicle operating would be ideal. So they probably need to look at, um, mobility vans, you know, maybe, maybe a, a wheelchair ramp, uh, equipped vehicle, that sort of thing. Currently, those big buses are the Swiss Army knife. They can pick up one people or 10. They don't know how many, 30 minutes from now, they're gonna be picking up because of the requests, along with planned routes. And they don't know if they're gonna have one wheelchair or three. And so I get why they're using the Swiss Army knife, the big bus. But I, I concur with Commissioner Brown with what I said earlier. Always, I would always love to be looking at ways of making more efficiency for the vehicle they choose moving forward. Those buses were, you know, they, they came along during the federal grant time.
Mm-hmm.
But as they age out and replace, maybe something that's, uh, less expensive, that still can pick up one or two wheelchairs, you know, how often do they pick up two wheelchairs? If that's 4% of the time, then maybe we go to a vehicle that'll hold one wheelchair, and you have to send two vehicles out occasionally. Those kinds of things. But I'm not in those day-to-day operations. I trust that they're being led well by, uh, the Director. And, you know, I would just encourage them, any department, to always be looking at future efficiencies and ways of doing things.
Agreed. And I think it was also discussed back in May, so I'm sure they have those notes as well. But keep in mind, since federal funding has decreased.
Right.
I'm sure the entities who are involved in picking up the additional costs.
Yes.
Might increase because of some of these requests. And so just keep that in mind as well.
Well, and I just want, I'm sorry, one, I was just gonna say, I'll shut up after this. But I, I appreciate that, the service that they do, because, uh, I think if it did go away, most of us in our day-to-day wouldn't realize it. But a lot of people, this would be a massive impact on their ability to provide for their family and take care of themselves.
Agreed.
And then I heard from constituents, when they, when the, when, when the medians came on, it also impacted routes. You know, I had some people complaining because they lost their routes. And so they had to find a way to get to the new route, you know, do new bus stops. Uh, and so, so they have a lot of things that they have to contend with that impacts the services that they provide. But again, I'm in support of us, um, providing, raising their budget.
Okay.
Ms. Payne, since Ms. Whedon is here, I think she gave me the nod that she wouldn't mind coming up and making a few comments, just.
Definitely.
I think the court needs all the information we can handle to do the correct budget. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, hi, Judge. Thank you for having me come up. And, um, believe it or not, I love.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to state your name one more time. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oh, I love the interaction. Um, and just to address the big buses, I'm sorry.
State your name and, and the group you're with, just for our listening audience. I'm sorry. Thank you.
My apologies. Wendy Whedon, Brazes Transit District.
Thank you.
So, again, just to address the big buses, Chuck is right. We, there, there is frequent times throughout the day where we have to pick up more than two buses at one time. And to deploy another vehicle, another employee, um, is not always an option, because like everyone else, we're constantly looking for employees. So, um, I'm not opposed to getting in a vehicle myself and going and doing it. It's just not always an option. The bigger vehicles did come at a time where there was a lot of federal money to get capital assets, which is not an option that we always have. So when those options or opportunities appear, we go for it. Um, we got those 12 vehicles for ourselves, and we got 30 vehicles for Texas A&M that they also operate. Um, we have a, a partnership, and we always have. But, and there was not an opportunity to buy smaller buses. And at the time, the 30-foot buses that we had were busting at the seams. Our green route that goes by the industry, industrial park was standing room only, 50, 51 people a day. So at that time, our growth required that we, we expand the size of our vehicle, which is what we did. And we went with low sulfur diesel to try to be the most economical. You are right, the tires do cost more. Um, and as a girl, my brain doesn't go to tires. But the fuel-wise, I have checked into that. I didn't check into all the body parts, and I do apologize. But in the grand scheme of things, your county is growing. And for the health of your county, you want a public transit system. And are we perfect? We're not. We never have. We've done the best that we can with the limited funds that we've, we've been given. And two years ago, those funds were decreased state and federally by 2 million, over $2 million. And in order to not reduce services, when we had to come out and ask the county and the cities. And Mr. Bentley, you do have a lot of farmland, but you also have a lot of rural people. And that's the other thing to keep in mind. All of you are not just looking out for the city of Bryan and College Station. You're also looking out for all those rural people out there that are citizens of this county that need and rely on transportation. You have a lot of aging folks. You have a lot of disabilities and stuff. The county moving the veterans right directly in front of the transit system is the most amazing thing ever. And, um, we now have an urban committee that meets at Brazes Transit District. And the purpose of that committee is to decide and choose how public transit looks in this area. And we're excited about that, because we finally are getting people to tell us, what is it that you do want us to do? And to address your comment, Chuck, about the smaller vehicles, um, there is a, a transit service called Micro Transit. It's a hot topic for everybody. There's been a lot of studies. Most of the studies come out that Micro Transit is not cheaper than a fixed route. You need, in order to do the routes in your precinct, Commissioner Brown, there's two. There's the gray and the pink. In order to replace those two routes, I would need eight mini buses, eight employees, double shift. And that's the minimum it would take. New software, new everything to do that, or keep running the two transit buses that I am. And I know it's hard, because if I were on the outside looking in, I would agree with all of you. It's just, from internally, I've seen it. I've seen it with other agencies. It's a, it's a nationwide trend. Micro Transit was the hot thing. It's essentially demand-response transit that we already do. It's just more at the ready. For people like me and you that would be choice users, we choose to use transit. We don't rely on transit. And that's the difference. And Fred, you are welcome to come out to Brazes Transit, and we can go over the budget. I can show you everything. We have nothing to hide. We go through a tremendous amount of audits, trial reviews, annual reviews, quarterly reviews by FTA and the state of Texas. And then, as always, we do an independent audit every year. And we're very transparent, and we'd love to show you or talk to you about anything.
I'm on board, kicking and screaming, but I'm on board.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
So, as some of those big green buses age out, project management is needing a vehicle for their use. And maybe we could get Jimmy to take a look at one of those buses.
You need one of those just for your family.
You're not wrong.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Ms. Whedon, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's a beautiful family.
Thank you, Commissioners.
It's a beautiful family, Mr. Brazos.
Yeah, that's a real testament to the mother.
Ms. Payne, continue.
Continue. Thank y'all so much for, I, I was the guinea pig to present the departmental budget, so everybody else in the back kinda know how, you know, how to present, I guess. Um, so the next up, I'm gonna call Fleet Shop Light Equipment. They're increasing their budget by $37,000. It's a 4% increase. Um, and it's a .28% overall. And so I'm gonna let, uh, Fleet Shop Light Equipment come up. Okay.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Yes. Dwayne Holloway, Assistant Fleet Manager.
She's gonna want you to get in that mic.
Get in. All righty.
Well, actually, the van, the thing is off, so go ahead.
Looks like on our budget, everything is, it went up just a little bit, like she said, 2%. Um, it's mainly adding money for tires, for the increased expenses. They're getting more, they're costing more, and also more different tires that we're using on the different Tahos and stuff that we have. Also, increased just a little bit on the, the out-of-office Also, increased just a little bit on the, the out-of-office training, which is a training that we, you, we send all our mechanics to, or some of them, to keep updated on the new, all the new technologies and diagnostic procedures and stuff on the newer cars when they come out. Trying to stay up to date on all that. That's the two big changes we had in our budget. Everything else is pretty much the same.
Commissioners, any questions for Dwayne?
Nope.
Dwayne, thank you so much.
Alright.
The next up is going to be Elections Administrator. She'll go over her admin budget as well as voter registration. Her administration budget increased by $15,000. It's a 4% overall increase and a .39 overall for the whole budget. The voter registration is a $13,000 increase, 56% based on, compared to last year's budget, but it's 0.01% for overall budget. Trudy?
Ms. Hancock, thank you, please state your name.
Trudy Hancock, Elections Administrator for Brazos County. In my regular budget, we had an increase in supplies and other charges due to the fact that in the previous legislation, we are now required to record, have surveillance cameras for any time ballots are being accessed for early voting ballot board, central count, things like that. And those must be livestreamed. Currently using a loner computer from IT because when the legislature met and it went into effect, of course, it was in between a budget cycle. And so we're use, currently using a loner computer from IT. And so that increase would help us be able to purchase that, would be able to purchase that computer to replace our loner computer. And then on repairs and maintenance, there is a increase there for, on our equipment maintenance, we will be having five elections next year and just the moving and relocating equipment and things like that on years that we, we typically see that just in transportation and things, sometimes things get joshed, broken, whatever. We do see a few more repairs, so the increase was to help cover any expected causes for repairs and maintenance for that. And then a small increase in our contract services due to our contracts. Most of them agree for, we have contracted for a 4% increase in our contract services for like our license and support for Hart, for our equipment, and then for Vista, for our DMS3, which is our document solution, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hancock?
Nope.
Thank you, Trudy.
And then on the voter registration, that is a fund that is funded by the state. Those funds that we set aside are funds that we get reimbursed for. Those are things that are very strategically planned and very minimal ways that we can spend those. They're required to be spent on very specific things that have to do with voter registration. And we do, we are able to pay for our license and support for our pull pads out of that. And so that does have an increase. And the other increase is just due to what the state allocates for us. They allocate it on how many new applications we have, how many changes we have. So they look at last year's, how, how active we were in voter registration. And then we get so much for each of those applications. So that are, those are just funds that they have set aside that we would be able to call back to get reimbursed for, for things that we would need in the voter registration.
Excellent. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hancock?
You don't see any change in what the state is going to provide, do you?
No, just a lot of more things that we're requiring. I just got back from conference yesterday. And yes, some of the legislation is going to have some fiscal impact on us.
Are they going to pay?
No, they are not.
Come on, don't be silly.
I just wanted to make, put it on the record, unfunded mandate.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you much.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. Ms. Payne?
Nina Payne with the Budget Office.
Hey, she looks familiar.
Okay, the next up is going to be American Rescue Plan Revenue Replacement. This is money that we receive from ARPA still. We are under contract with the Wixon Creek SUD Generator Project. And so it takes about 12 months lead to order this generator. This is already contracted out, we're just waiting for the generator to get here. So that is why there's $500,000. It's a 0% increase to the budget, like I said, it's from ARPA.
Do we have an ETA on that by any chance?
Um, I would have to ask.
Do we have an ETA on the generator?
Who are we looking for?
Who would know?
I'll get you that information.
I'm just curious, don't stop the meeting, I'll just, curious.
I will get that information to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next up is going to be County Treasurer's Office. And she will go over, he, sorry.
I was going, what?
Oh, sorry.
Did not know that about him.
Sorry. And so his increase to the budget is $28,000, which is 3%. And you could tell that most of it's to the 4% cost of living. He did decrease his budget, and I'll let Christian speak now.
Mr. Villarreal, welcome.
Good morning, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Christian Villarreal. Christian Villarreal, County Treasurer. As she said, most of the line items went down. There was one for cellphone that went up. The rest was, the rest either stayed the same or decreased. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
So you're saying the cellphone increase is the majority of the?
Correct, that's the, that's the one that went up.
You say what now?
Big spender.
No further questions?
Thanks, Christian.
Mr. Villarreal, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Debbie?
I apologize, I'm sleep deprived.
I'm sure you are.
The next up is going to be Risk Management, their admin budget. It is increased to the, from, compared to last year, $36,773, which is a 5% increase from last year. A total two point, a total .27 compared to overall budget. And I'll have Ms. Leslie come up and speak her, her budget.
Ms. Contreras, welcome.
Hello, good morning, Leslie Contreras, Risk Manager.
Is that your security bear?
This is, this is actually our office safety bear that we use to knock on wood because there are many things that we talk about in our office that we don't want to occur. So it's kind of a funny, but it, literally, we do do this probably multiple times.
Smokey the Bear, recycled Smokey the Bear?
I, I don't know, I don't know. But it did, it used to give free hugs, but we changed that to safety, so.
Only you can prevent risk to the county.
Okay, so Joseph gave you all a, a little packet. I felt like I needed to come up here and just kind of give you a little bit of background. Risk management really, there's always been a risk management department for the county. But when, when I came in and took over, I basically just revamped the whole thing. We basically started from scratch and started beefing up programs and trying to get the safety culture into a better place for the county because we didn't really have one at all. So I wanted to just kind of give you a little bit of information. And just with a caveat of, there's only a tiny bit of information in this brochure, in this packet. However, we are working on developing a quarterly report, and you'll see why when we get further into the, into the document, but a quarterly report to y'all so that y'all know how many incidents are occurring, how much they're costing, what departments are involved, that kind of thing. So our department is made up of currently four people, but thanks to y'all, we, we appreciate y'all approving or putting into proposed budget the new ADA coordinator position. So that would make us now a five-man office, or woman, five-man or woman office. So basically, our objective with the county budget every year is to enhance countywide staff training and compliance programs. The key things in, in the increases that you'll see that Nina's giving you are going to be mainly in two different accounts. The first account is in the training. We are asking for the commissioners to approve doubling our training budget, which would take it from $5,000 to $10,000. We did go over budget in that account this year, so just wanted to make note of that. And then we are also asking for a $2,000 increase in drug and alcohol testing that would make the total amount in the budget for us for $5,000. We have a few small reductions in our budget with, you know, under, we don't need to buy uniforms this year, so that got zeroed out. Printer supplies, we have a copier now, so we don't have to buy as much printer supplies. So we had some small reductions, nothing, nothing significant on those. But we had some significant reductions in computer contracts, contract services, and professional services. We, we canceled a claims management software this, earlier this year because we were trying out a local company to come in and they were basically starting from the ground up and they wanted to use us as a guinea pig. And we thought, great, it could be customized to us, you know. It did not work out, so we canceled that contract so that the county wouldn't be on the hook for that amount of money. And then also the, the changes of thought process for the ADA, to get the ADA transition plan completed, we decided not to do a contract, so that reduced the budget by about $75,000. So total reduction in the operational side, that doesn't have to do with salary benefits, just the operational side, is approximately $85,000 of a reduction, even with those two increases in the drug and alcohol and the training budget. Go ahead.
Why, why do we do defensive driving?
So we have over 300 drivers in the county and we have lots of accidents. So defensive driving is a preventative measure to help individuals that might need to partake in the defensive driving, maybe after an accident, as a corrective measure per se. Now, we do have a driver policy and it requires all drivers take defensive driving every two to three years, depending on their department's requirements. So it is required by county policy that they take defensive driving.
Does it help our insurance?
It probably doesn't help our insurance. I think they used to do that a long time ago, but they don't do that, they don't really do that anymore. I think it's, the business has just gotten too big. But it might help the employee for their insurance to, if they take the class, they have a chance of sending in their certificate and maybe getting a discount on their, on their personal car insurance. However, this defensive driving class will not dismiss any tickets. So if an employee gets a ticket, they have to do their own, you know, thing to get that ticket removed from their record.
Well, as a veteran's defensive driving person, it does not redo, you know, you always have to pay the ticket. It just impact, impacts the insurance.
Yeah.
I've, I've learned not to give my money away.
So we do have over 300 pieces of, I think we have over 300 vehicles. I don't know if Fleet's still here, but.
They have left the building.
But I think we have about over 300 vehicles in the county that we insure and we have more drivers than that. Because some drivers use their personal vehicles, some drivers, you know, are, might be checking out vehicles and things like that. So we're asking for, for drug and alcohol testing. Did I answer your question, Commissioner?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
For the increase on drug and alcohol testing, the $2,000, where that is coming from is our office is working directly with HR as well as legal to modify some current policies in our drug and alcohol and safety policies to incorporate additional safety sensitive positions. And the safety sensitive positions, we're, we're looking at including those for people or county employees that operate heavy and small equipment. So forklifts, motor graders, backhoes, things like that. Currently, we do a random drug testing program for CDL drivers only. However, by incorporating this, this new, you know, adding to that program under safety sensitive, it would increase the number of employees that would be on the random list. And it's, and it, that, the employees chosen for that program are going to be based on whether or not they operate heavy and light, light fleet equipment, their position and job descriptions. It'll put them on the random drug testing. And we think it's going to add an additional 50 to 70 individuals on the random drug testing list. The first year, which would be this year, if we can get it all up and going, the first year will, will probably cost a little bit more because in order to put them on the random drug testing, you have to send them all right then for testing for, to get a negative. Once they get a negative, then they're entered on the program. That's just how the processes work. So the first initial year, it'll be a little bit more expensive, but then each year after that, the randoms, they only, they only random drug test about 10, 10% of our list. So if the list consists of 100 people, they would only take, they would only send us a list quarterly for 10 people to drug test. So next year might be, we might ask for a reduction in this account. Any questions on the drug and alcohol increase?
Commissioners?
No.
Nope.
Continue.
Okay. Increase in training budget. So training is vital for the county and the county's safety culture in order to reduce incidents and claims and injuries, things like that. This budget will help us to continue the current training that we're doing, which in your packet, you can see that we provide, our office specifically, provides CPR, first aid training, defensive driving, forklift certification, Hazcom training, which is all chemicals that the county has. There's laws that we have to, federal, federal laws that we have to follow in that. The spill prevention plan, which we are starting this winter, which we need to train all drivers to know what to do if fuel spills at the fuel island. We're starting that this year. And we do training on duress and emergency action plan for employees and reasonable suspicion for supervisors, and that's also a drug testing thing, for supervisors and employees. We also coordinate and host training led by other entities and/or businesses. So sometimes if a department calls and says, hey, we need chainsaw training, then we, we don't have that expertise, so then we call steel and say, hey, can you please come out and train? We have about 40 people that need chainsaw training. And so they come out and they tell all the safety specs, they tell all the, you know, they show them the gear that they're supposed to be wearing, things like that. So far, we have been successful in getting all of these trainings for free, even though it's an outside person coming in. There are some resources that we use through Texas LTAP, through University of Texas, I'm sorry, University of Texas at Arlington. They have a grant through LTAP and we're allowed so many trainings per year through that grant. It is a little bit of a headache to schedule, but we do do those. And they do stuff like heavy equipment safety, work zone safety. It's a lot of, it's a lot of road crew, road and bridge type training that we get scheduled, flagger, stuff like that. So I wanted to just show you the different kinds of trainings we currently provide and then also tell you. So the next page shows how many, we, we started the CPR and defensive driving trainings just a few years ago. I've been in the office since 2018 and we've just been doing little baby steps to get everybody on board. So far, we have trained 399 employees in CPR and first aid. That is the most popular class that we have and people ask for it daily. The key is though, each student costs, each student for CPR and for defensive driving costs money per, per student because there's a book, there's little things that come with it and that each individual gets it. And so there's a cost per each of those two classes. We've, on defensive driving, we've trained 294 employees. We are really working this, this year to beef up our defensive driving classes. We're recommending training when, when departments have accidents. If it's. If it's, if it leads to us being financially responsible for the accident, then we're, we're starting to send out, you know, recommendations like, hey, we recommend that you take this training, here's the link, and, and go for it, you know. Are there any questions about what we train on or what I just mentioned?
Commissioners?
No.
Okay. So CPR is $14 a student, defensive driving is 650 and some change, it's 659 a student in person. So we do hold in-person classes because we can train 30 people at a time if we do that. Not everyone can make those in-person trainings, let's just say county attorney's office or the offices that are mainly in-office on a regular basis. We have online classes now, which is a new thing this year. Those are a lot more expensive because it's a per-student cost and we send them a link and they can do it at their own pace, but those are $44 a person. So, the, as you can see in my little packet, I broke down the reasoning for the price increase in training. I just rounded it up to 10,000. It, my, my figures actually come to $9,842, but I just rounded it up to the nearest. Any questions about that cost?
Commissioners?
No.
No? Okay. So basically, our goal is just to create a safety culture. It's not only for our employees, but also for our citizens because they have to enter our buildings. We have to make sure that our buildings are safe for them to enter. And we just want to use innovation and strategic problem solving in our office, but also save money at the same time. We will continue to grow our programs and develop them. We've only been in, been in doing, I think we're on our sixth year of, of really growing the program. So we are looking for buy-in for the safety culture of the county. And buy-in will take not only our department heads and our elected officials, but it will also start with y'all. Because buy-in in a safety culture starts from the top. And so we ask that, that y'all support us and, and help us with this increase. And also maybe encourage other departments, like, you know, hey, you know, go to those trainings. I'm sure HR would feel, you know, feels the same way.
They're smiling.
A lot of people don't have time for training and they, go ahead.
Do you meet with any resistance?
Um, I mean, sometimes.
Sometimes.
Sometimes we meet with resistance. We're not, usually when we walk into a room, they're like, oh gosh, what is the risk management here for? It's usually pleasant, but we do get a little bit of resistance on training. And I think it's more like, people don't feel like they have time.
Right.
You know, they're, they all, they have their own jobs, they have busy, busy jobs to do too and, and tasks. And so it's, it's all about making time. It's also, it's also about department head and elected official buy-in so that they'll send their employees, but we're working on that.
Right. Well, and I just thought about it when I get the, when we get the IT, take the security, safety thing from IT.
Mm-hmm.
And when I first see that request that you've got to do that, I, I kind of have a personal groan. I get it done.
Mm-hmm.
But I do have a moment of, oh gosh, I gotta do this training online.
Yes.
So, okay.
Yeah.
But I understand that because it's, it's, it's a short-term sacrifice for long-term safety for the whole county and those around us.
Yes, yes.
I just thought about myself and IT's training.
And, and that one is actually regulated, I believe that's a requirement.
Yes.
And there may be in the future that we have required trainings, like defensive driving is a required training for all the drivers, but currently, there's not something, there's not any trainings that are absolutely required.
Okay.
Yet.
Leslie, I noticed in some facilities, we have defibrillators.
Yes.
Is that, I, I'm sure that's probably places where a lot of public might be
Yes.
Interacting with our staff and our staff.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have training for use of those?
Yes, that is actually part of the CPR first aid
Okay.
Class. It also includes the AED.
Great.
We have, we have actual ones that they actually put on the dummy, I call it a dummy, the mannequin. They put it on the mannequin, they, they activate it, they do, follow all the instructions. So they actually get hands-on training in the CPR and first aid class with that.
So when is the next CPR class?
It'll probably be in October because we're almost out of license, out of certifications to give out.
There's one next week, but it's at JDC.
There's one at Juvenile next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have to, because of my knees, do you do, you are required because the person may be on the floor to get down on the floor? Because I really want to take it too.
Yes. I mean, we can do on a tabletop as well, but-
Right, but if I'm going to CP, give CPR to somebody, more than likely they're-
They're going to be on the floor, more than likely, yeah. Because they have to be laying flat. But yes, we, it's all hands-on, so.
Okay.
Further into the, into, into the packet that I gave you, I just wanted to give you a little taste of the incidents and claims. You'll get a much more in-depth report from us probably in October and it'll give you the full year's worth for 2025 and also the two years prior so that you can compare. But I just wanted to give you a, kind of a look. So currently, this year in fiscal 2025, we've had 149 claims or incidents. Not every incident results in a claim and not every claim results in finance, finances going out. Our office kind of, our office just goes through those processes to try to figure out which ones are going to be, could become a lawsuit, you know, and which ones won't, or are we at fault here? No, we're not, it's denied, kind of thing. So we just, we go through each of these. So we had 149 total, however, there were actually only 139 occurrences. So when I, when I'm saying that, 149 incidents or claims is because one incident can result in multiple claims. For instance, we had, we had a wreck not too long ago and that wreck actually in, turned into four separate claims. Because you have our vehicle, you have the driver of the other vehicle, the passenger of the other vehicle, and then the owner of the other vehicle. So it actually resulted in four claims that are currently open. So I just wanted to give you all that information. We had, so far this year, we've had 18 at-fault incidences and 110 were not, I'm sorry, 101 of those incidents were not our fault.
Oh, really?
And so the, the, it's a significant difference in number and that's what we want, right? We don't want any of them to be at our fault. But we also had 23 claims that came in from either citizens saying, I was driving behind a road and bridge truck and a rock came out and hit my windshield. Well, it's really hard to prove that. And so most of those get denied because unless they have an actual dash cam proving it, we don't know if it came from the ground. And by law, that is, that's just a road hazard, it's not on anybody else. So that's what those other party claims are. There's not really any fault or another, another example of that would be a, a cement truck driving on one of our county roads and they have a rollover and they spill cement all over the road. We then, our county, 911 dispatch then contacts road and bridge, they go out to assess, emergency management's contacted, all that. And then there might be some cleanup efforts and then we charge-
Or a new speedboat.
Yes. We actually charge those individuals, like if they get into an incident and they mess up one of our roads or whatever, we actually charge them for the cleanup and our man-hours and equipment hours. If, we had one with Knife River that happened with some fuel and it was a very big job and they, they had to pay us $10,000, which they did.
But you have to report it as an incident, no matter the circumstances.
Yes, yes.
Got you.
So that, that's the kind of thing that would fall in the other category on the fault side.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions about any of that?
No.
Okay. I wanted to show y'all, this also shows you how much we've paid out this year out of accidents and claims. We've paid $208,224 and some change, but we've also, the next page shows the revenue that we've brought in from reimbursements, either through insurance or charging third party, the third party for the damages that they caused. We've actually collected $121,742.40, excuse me, to make up for some of that $208,000 that we spent out. So risk management, not only with that, not just claims, but we also have to follow TCEQ guidelines, FMCSA guidelines for CDL drivers and, and HAZCOM program guidelines, that most of those are all federally regulated and we try to stay compliant and all of that. And then I put information in here about all of our positions so you can see what we do in the office, just to give you an idea. Do y'all have any questions?
Nope.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Constance?
Nope.
No. Leslie, thank you so much.
I didn't have to knock on wood that time.
Well, good report, good report, helps us understand what you do.
Yes, thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Ms. Payne?
We're going to move right along to the tax assessor collector. We're going to discuss their administrative budget as a total increase of $108,794 compared to last year's budget, 3% increase, 1.25 overall budget.
Ms. Leonard. Good morning.
And so our, we'll start with the highest increase that I'm asking for this year.
Would, for the record, just-
I'm with the tax office, Melissa Leonard.
Thank you so much.
Sorry.
No, perfect. New, new, new game, new rules, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So I am requesting an increase of $2,000 for the tax rolls and tax statements for 2025. There was an additional increase for the software that I use to do the truth and taxation process. The next increase at the very bottom is we are now renting five DMV workstations instead of four. We are agents of the state, we can only process motor vehicle transactions with their computers to do their work. We need another computer, so we got it. The next request is kind of a combo of these are combined. I am asking for an additional computer. In our office, we are able to submit our check deposits electronically. We only have one computer in our office that has storage large enough to process this transaction. We are also able to process our tax payments electronically on this one computer. So the storage has to be larger on this one computer. I'm asking for another computer large enough to have a secondary station in my office. And I only need that secondary computer seasonal. So I asked the software company what the cost was for a seasonal license. Our main concern when it gets hectic with having only one computer is during peak property tax season. Since we are using it to send our checks to the bank, we have a much larger volume of checks to run through that software. We also need to be able to process the mail-in property tax payments through that software as well. With one computer, we are using it all day and still not being able to get enough done with what we have. So I'm just really asking for a secondary computer so I can have two employees fully utilizing what we are able to have in our office.
Commissioners, any questions on that? No, no, continue, thank you.
The only other thing is I am asking for an additional $100 for certifications for our staff. I'm working on getting more employees certified in our office and I need an extra $100 to make sure that the staff is certified and trained in their areas.
Thank you.
Did you say? Perfect. Okay.
Any, any further questions? Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are one of the top probably three community-facing departments and I hear over and over again about the improvements and people are recognizing over the last several years. I know that that was some of your predecessor and certainly you're carrying that on and I just wanted to say, good job.
Thank you, thank you.
And y'all are really busy. Every time I try to go, it is just lines out the door, so thank you for what you do.
It is busy and so we try not to ask for employees and use what we have and keep our budget down with, and work with what we have.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Leonard, thank you so much.
Now, if we can, now if we can just defund the appraisal district, that would be great.
Has nothing to do with us.
Then our budget would shrink too because no property taxes, right?
So what now?
It'd be a saving, both wins.
That's right.
And so next up is going to be IT technology. The goal for today is to run through until 11 o'clock, we're going to take a little longer lunch and so if I could keep out here till 11 o'clock, that would be great. I know some will be in and out. And the next up is going to be IT technology, we're going to go over two divisions. The first one is going to be his administration budget, the second is going to be IT county-wide budget. His administration budget went up from $176,000, which is 4% increase and again, is granted with the cost of living. It is a 1.81 overall increase to the budget. His IT services, again, this is going to be county-wide, it's a decrease of $639,000, which is a negative 13% decrease. And so I'll go ahead and ask Eric Caldwell to come up, please.
Morning Judge, Commissioners, Eric Caldwell, Chief Information Officer for Brazos County. I'm a little bit puzzled by the increase in the 100 division.
That's your polo.
Okay. Okay, so. Because I was, I was ready to come up here and-
You, you do want to keep that, correct?
Take-
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I do.
Sure. Have the option.
But without considering that, I was up here, ready to come up here and take credit for actually reducing the supply and other charges and the repairs and maintenance and the contracts for services, as you see there in those sections that I have direct control over. The supplies and other charges, we actually decreased by $3,180. Repairs and maintenance, we decreased by $1,500. I can go into details of how we accomplished that if you would like.
No. No, sir.
Okay. All right.
It's a hard pass.
Moving on then to the 006 division, it's the division that is meant to support the rest of the county. You see there that there was a decrease of $639,485. To that, I would add two additional decreases that budget is not aware of. Unfortunately, I didn't get these numbers until actually just yesterday, but in the 6050 account, I need to reduce that by another $118,790.
Wow, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's wonderful.
So the, so the, so the current ask in that, in that line item, it's currently $514,440. I need, I need it reduced down to $416,380. And so that $118,000 drop deserves some explanation.
Yeah, I'd love to hear that.
Sure. The, the majority of that line item is for the annual rollout, the replacement of all of our aging computer fleet. And the manufacturers of the, of the equipment that we purchase change models every year. It's a, it's kind of a rat race.
It's a racket.
Yes, it is. In fact, I just heard that Microsoft is, is being sued for forcing everybody to go to Windows 11, moving away from Windows 10. The accusation is that that was really meant to force people to move to their AI platform as opposed to their competitor's AI platform, but that's, that's neither here nor there. But back to the manufacturers, obso, obsoleting their older models, every year they come out with a different model, but typically, they want to sell through reseller channels. They don't typically want to sell directly. And so we approached the reseller channels for quotes early in the spring as we're developing this budget. But it has gotten to the point now where these manufacturers drag it out and drag it out and drag it out. And so in, in this case, this year, the manufacturer did not provide their costs for their new models to their- to their re-channel, reseller channels until just very, very recently. And so it was only now that we could actually get a true quote for that equipment. So back in May, as we were developing this, we, we had to put something into our budget, and so we did worst-case scenario. We go to, we go to the website and we find the retail cost to Joe Citizen that does not include any kind of volume discounts that, you know, that we enjoy and that sort of thing. And so, we turn in a number that we know is exorbitant. We know it is beyond what we're actually going to require in the hopes that by the time I get up here today, we will actually have the, the correct number. I got that yesterday, so. All right, moving on then, there's another reduction in computer maintenance. We're going to need to reduce that by $3,000. The reason for that reduction is as follows. We had submitted and were approved for a capital project this fiscal year to replace our VoIP telephone system. But that project did not get off the ground until after we turned in our budget back in May. So as of May, when we turned in our budget, not knowing exactly how that project was going to unfold, we stuck $3,000 in there so we could buy additional handsets, telephone handsets that would be required if we stuck with our current telephone solution. Now that that RFP has been released and that project is well underway, we do not want to buy any more of these older-style handsets because that project is going to replace that entire fleet anyway.
Thank you.
So, computer maintenance, need to reduce that by $3,000. Now, the lion's share of that reduction, $639,000, that is due to the Axon cost being pulled from this IT budget and being placed into the different departments' budgets. So, for example, there was $88,000 for the district attorney's premier Axon. That had historically been budgeted in the IT's budget here. With, starting with FY '26, that's going to be put into the DA's budget. And so the DA, when they have to defend their budget, $88,000 of that is going to be because of the Axon.
So they're going to have to increase their budget?
Well, I, I can't speak to that. That cost will be in their budget. And whether that results in increase or not, I don't know. And then, the law enforcement, the law enforcement portion of the Axon is being budgeted in the jail, SO, constables. And so I, I really can't take credit for that, but it sure looks good anyway.
It does. I'm going to let them explain that.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
Commissioners?
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Caldwell, thank you so much. Ms. Payne?
So that money's not going away, it's just going to a different county.
So yes, going back to Axon, we decided to take the Axon contracts out of the IT's budget, and we're, we're actually budgeting, budgeting the costs in each department to show true cost to that department.
So the money's not a savings, it's just being redistributed in terms of the cost.
And I understand that, but Eric, thank you for those other areas that you guys-
Yes, yes.
-discovered efficiencies and saved money.
Okay, the next up is going to be project management. There is a big decrease, $8 million. Keep in mind, that 10, it was that 10 million that we had deferred maintenance, and I pushed it down to Expo to properly account for it. So his new budget for next year is 2.3 million with a decrease, decrease of eight, which is a negative 77 percent decrease compared to last year. And it's a 0.85 percent overall budget. I'll go ahead and ask Trevor Lansdowne to come up and speak.
Thank you. Welcome, Trevor.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners, Trevor Lansdowne.
Green bus.
Oh, yes. I'm pumped.
Yes.
I think I need a different license, but-
Do you have your CBL?
I do not. I do not.
There's training available.
There is. I, I, that's what I hear.
Yeah, here.
That's right.
And you can take defensive driving too.
Exactly.
Fred and I teach a class called offensive driving, but no one in the county is allowed to take it.
I think they teach that everywhere in Brazos County. Yeah, so, I mean, there's, again, the big decrease on the deferred maintenance side for what we're going to do out at Expo and what we've got contracted. We didn't get it done as quickly as we could, so we're sort of, we're not rolling and adding another, another deferred maintenance project for next fiscal year because we haven't, we haven't quite got started yet on this one. So, we are continuing our building evaluations. Y'all approved the contract with the architect to move forward, and those evaluations will start in the next couple of weeks. As far as the rest of my budget goes, outside of salaries and benefits, there's an increase in cost for the software that we use to manage our construction projects. The pricing on that is based on the volume of construction that we're doing. And as y'all know, we're really busy right now, and so that's the, that's the largest increase. There's some dollars for training and things that we moved around in there. And similar to what Nina was saying earlier, we took it from conferences and seminars to online. There's a lot of that stuff that we can do online, so it's easier to do in-house. We don't have to leave. We've got a lot going on, so. And then we, the court conditionally granted a position to us, and so there's a salary and benefits increase, as well as computer equipment, cellphone, and items related to that position. We are attempting to purchase as much of that this fiscal year because I do have a little bit of money left over in my budget. And so, as much of that as we can get done before October, we'll get it done, and then we-
Thank you.
Can give it back.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Commissioners?
Nope.
Y'all are very busy and keeping up with a lot of-
Next year's going to be even more fun.
Yeah.
Thank you for all you do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank y'all for all you do.
Thank y'all.
Ms. Payne?
I just want to make a note that before we went over capital projects, remember that master plan, that million dollars? I moved it from capital because it's not a capital project to his budget, so that's why it's not a true $10 million decrease. I added the 10, the million there, and so that's where we're going to count for it.
Very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the explanation.
For human resources, their admin budget, they have decreased it by $51,000. It's a negative three percent decrease compared to last year, but it's a 0.85 percent compared to overall budget. And I'll ask Jennifer Salazar for her explanation.
Welcome, Ms. Salazar.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Jennifer Salazar, HR Director. For FY '26, the HR budget remains essentially flat. The largest decrease there was in a contract account that we didn't need, so that's why that part was reduced. Our overall reduction is about $1,100. The only increase, or the only significant increase that we requested was $5,000 for recruiting. After hosting our first-ever county job fairs last year, we hosted two of them. We now kind of have a better understanding of what resources are needed in order to run those initiatives effectively. And that increase, we were able to offset by trying to make some reductions in other areas of our budget. Do y'all have any questions?
Commissioners?
Did y'all see results from those two recruiting events?
We did, if you allow me to continue. Okay, great. Okay, so we had two main areas for HR, right? We had two, two big areas we wanted to focus on for FY '25. One of those was recruiting. So, by the way, for departments that are in attendance, our next job fair is October 8th. Y'all should have received an email today about that.
Correct.
The two job fairs we had, one was in October, the second one was in April. The October one, we had 270 people attend that, which was amazing. And then the one in April, we were able to get 285 participants, which was great. We received positive feedback from both attendees and participating departments. Several departments found multiple qualified applicants to interview, and we actually had a number of hires that came out of those job fairs. So, very, very happy with the results of that.
Great. Excellent. Commissioner Brown, did you have a question?
Yeah, Jennifer, I'm sure you know who Phil Adams is. He, for, for, just in case you don't know Chuck, he's the guy that owns the insurance company that places the insurance for our employees.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
I know Mr. Adams.
Phil called me and he said, Fred, he said, "Texas Association of Counties should be giving you 100 percent of the rebates on the prescription drugs." Right now, last year, they only gave-
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent.
Correct.
And the year before that was only 50 percent.
Correct.
I think it's imperative that we tell them, "We want 100 percent, period."
Absolutely. I have, I relayed that message to them now three times. So they are working on our renewal right now.
Okay. Well, I would tie it to that, say, "We want 100 percent," or "We're going to look for options." Because Phil said, "There's no reason why we don't get 100 percent."
Okay. We'll work on it.
So, I just wanted to make everybody else aware of it up here.
Good, good. Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Any other questions?
Any further questions for Ms. Salazar?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer, thank you.
We're going to skip the county auditors. Keep in mind that she is by statute. She has to have a public hearing with the district judges, and it's set for September. And so, once it's been set, they usually put their approved court order through Commissioners Court for acknowledgement. And so, once that happens, that's when that practice, that practice will take place.
Thank you for clarification.
The next up is going to be purchasing. They have a decrease in their budget of $181,000, which is a negative percent compared to last year. Overall, it's 0.39 percent. So Charles Went, if you don't mind?
Welcome, Mr. Went.
Who are you? My name is Charles Went. Some of the departments call me Mr. Wonderful. They all got their budget cut today, and so-
Oh, really?
You are no longer Mr. Wonderful?
I'm always Mr. Wonderful. I do want to compliment, the job fair was extremely helpful. We were able to get one of our employees out of that, and so we appreciate that initiative by HR and their efforts to continue to help all of us for the things that we do. So we do have a, we do have a decrease of $3,090 in our non-salary budget. We try to run a pretty lean ship, just like the rest of the departments do. And I think that that helps demonstrate our willingness to try to do whatever we can to contribute to producing taxes the best we can. All doing that, we continue to, we will probably be hiring before the end of the year our one open position to try to help us with our workload that is fully funded and all by the court. So, we have that. Our workload continues to increase. Our term contracts, last year, we did 136 and 148 one-time contracts. This year, we're up to 152 and 110, and the year's not over yet. So, we anticipate that that will continue to increase. We look forward to soliciting to try to get, test the market and make sure that we get the best spend for the county's dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Commissioners, any questions?
Charles, you may want to mention about the, about the, we want to do business with the county fair that you did with the Chamber of Commerce and how they would like for us to do it again next year.
Yes, sir. Try not to toot our own horn. I don't want to toot everybody else's. But we were, did take the opportunity that Commissioner Brown and the Chamber of Commerce set up to try to advertise abilities for local vendors to do business with government entities. And we had very good participation, and so we do anticipate doing that again. And so, we are thankful. We found some good opportunities to do business with some local vendors, and I think it was extremely educational for them as well, so.
Excellent. Mr. Wonderful, I know you don't want to toot your own horn, but I observed something over the last couple of years, and I'll leave names out of it. But we had some contractors that were complaining about doing business with the county that they found it difficult. We held a workshop talking about doing business with the county and how to submit for bids and how you can go in post-mortem and figure out maybe why you didn't get a bid. You met with me and two contractors personally about this issue. I've noticed both of those contractors submitted bids to the advice that you gave, looked at things post-mortem, and then that they've received contracts with the county. And I think it was ultimately because, just, just me talking, I think they were copying and pasting from one bid to another and, and maybe not responding as precisely to a particular bid. And so someone else did, and they lost contract. That was able to be kind of uncovered during that process. And they're, they're very pleased with the, the interaction they have with the county and you and your department. And I wanted to give you a kudos for that because obviously we want to let the people that are paying our taxes try to do business with the county as much as possible. But through your leadership there, I help you, and good communication, I think you helped uncover an issue that they were able to self-correct and now have successfully, I've seen, you know, been awarded some contracts with the county because they're doing it the best way that they can for submitting. And then also looked at the post-mortem on things where they missed. So, I think that's a win, and it's something that took, you know, it's two, two and a half years now that I've seen that kind of progress and evolve. And it's easily lost in these meetings, but I wanted to give you hats, tip of the hat for that. That's a good job.
I appreciate it. The process you mentioned, we typically, it's difficult in the public sector. You typically only have one copy customer at the end of that. That's the one that wins the contract. But the debriefs that you, that you mentioned have been available for years. We've encouraged vendors to take advantage of that, and I think that it is beneficial. And we don't tell them, "Hey, you should have put this," or "This is the number you should have put," anything like that. It's tailoring their response to the actual solicitation, the things that we ask for, and not just a blank template that you, it's one, one-size-fits-all. It's customizing it to, tailoring it to that particular project, the expertise needed, the similar types of projects, and also, thank you for your help in liaising with those companies to take advantage of that opportunity.
Yeah, well done.
Mr. Wonderful, would you also just bring us up to speed on the credit card deal that, that you're putting together that we'll start paying the county back money?
Yes, sir. We, we have that contract. We are trying to work through some minor details with the Treasurer's Office, the Auditor's Office, so forth and so on, so that we can get that to you. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. I was hoping to get it to y'all this coming Tuesday. I'm afraid that we're still waiting on some responses from the company to get that worked out. I feel confident we will. It's just some logistical issues. There was an account that we were unaware of that the Treasurer's Office was kind enough to bring. So we just want to make sure we don't have, we don't have an incorrect posting of payments to the wrong account or credit cards or what have you. But we do believe, at your suggestion, we investigated that we escalated that in our priority list. We will be bringing that, and we will potentially be piggybacking on the state-of-Texas comptrollers contract and potentially offer tremendous opportunity for rebates. We just have to be smart about how we do it. We don't want to incur additional convenience fees that offset any savings that we have and make sure that it is a true value and savings to the county. But I do anticipate that is a small number of weeks away from the court seeing it.
Good news.
Great. Thank you so much.
It's my pleasure. Mr. Went, thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Ms. Payne?
We still have a couple of departments to go through. I don't, Facility Services is a little bigger. There's three divisions. And so, I would ask if we would like to go to recess, come back at 2:00 so we could finish?
That was my next question. Do we have another agenda for this afternoon, or this is the agenda for the entire day?
This is the agenda for the entire day. Yes, we have two departments left, but I don't want to cut in the middle and have to come back at 2:00 and, and rediscuss what-
And that would be Ernest and Desmond back there. Does that suit you fine gentlemen? Well then, let's proceed with recess and lunch break and meet back at 2:00 PM. Commissioners, department heads, thank you all.
Thank you.
Recession.